I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. First thing we have is the reading of the minutes from the last meeting, and there is one change that I had on there. On the bills, there was a bill that went to me that shouldn't have. Might be the wrong one. Um, so that one needs to come on. Any other changes, additions?
Yeah, on the utility auditor position, next steps, you know, it just made that there was a motion made. And I was wondering if there was an issue with, uh, putting, you know, because it really has nothing about any of the discussion. And being there was yes and no votes, I was like, it noted that the reason that we, that I voted no was because of the interview aspect of it. I just feel that's something I'd be, I'd like to have in the minutes. That we, that I re- I requested interviews as an option. There was a lot of discussion on it, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Anything else? Have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve with corrections.
Moved by Dave, is there a second?
All second.
Seconded by Paul. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Next item is the presentation of the bills. Everybody has the updated AP approval list. Should have a total at the bottom. Oh, this one? It should have a total at the bottom.
This one doesn't.
Is it in the packet or not?
Or he didn't get one?
Oh, okay.
There's some that were missed on the list, on the, they weren't missed in the packet, or in the signatures, it was just missing in the sheet of all the bills. So anything from S below wasn't on there? If so, do I have a motion to approve?
No, no, I have no questions.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Nicole makes motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dave, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, sign. Motion carries. Next item is the monthly disconnects.
What's happening with H. Borough?
Julie, as long as you're here, we haven't, did they go to collections or have we sent them? It hasn't been done yet. Where are the other ones? Should we hold off on the collections, being that we're this far and we're gonna start, we can then start the process for our taxes?
Yeah, I think that would be probably a better idea.
So we need a motion, or we need a, um, need a motion to rescind our original motion?
For the collection agency?
For the collection agency.
So we're planning on doing what? Taxes, you said?
If we, as long as we remember, in August or September?
And what's the advantage or the disadvantage either way with the collections versus?
Correct. If you do collections, they'll take a percentage cut usually, or some fee, whereas if we file against the real estate taxes, is, it will be fully paid or the property goes through tax foreclosure. So, real estate taxes generally, they will pay it.
Okay. I just didn't know how soon they would have to, three years, I suppose they can go up to or not?
Correct. You could make it go unpaid for three years, but then it goes through tax foreclosure and then the county gets the property.
And we can still keep putting it on every year?
Yep, can still add it every year.
And we could make the first motion to rescind it, and then we can make a second motion that this would go to collect, or go to where the process is started to.
That's what you recommend here, versus the collection side of it?
So hard to say because you're guessing what they're going to do. I think with this property, that they will pay them eventually in regard to the real estate taxes. It'd be nice if they just paid them now, because when you're doing that certified, there's gonna be a cutoff. I think it's August is the cutoff. They could still not pay them until the next August, then we go through the same process.
And that's where we had missed it last year. I think if this came to us in September, October, well, then we were too late, so.
What do you guys think?
I think it's a good thing. I think it'll, I think we're just, you know, we're gonna pay a lot of money out probably to the collection agency and.
Some can be thirty to forty percent. Some are, they're thirty to forty percent.
Yeah, I realize though, as I'm mainly talking about this one.
Yeah.
So.
Just thirty to forty percent of. But it could be more than that. Close to ten thousand, about forty percent.
There's no guarantee there either, I suppose.
Well, collections wise, there's no guarantee. What they'll do is they'll sue them, they'll get a judgment, and they'll have to enforce the judgment to get paid. And I don't think, we don't get paid till the judgment gets paid. So, but judgments attached to real property, if they went through the process, they could foreclose on the judgment. Depends on the collection agency.
And it's kinda staying in halls.
Correct.
Well, I'll make a motion to rescind the, to send it to account, to collections. Make that motion to start with.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Nicole. And this will take two thirds to pass. Correct.
Yeah, to go to collections.
The motion that said we were sending H. Borough to collections. Julie's not used to mics in here. I got a text that said, is everybody's mic on? Julie's? Hopefully that's better for you, Gary. Um, so we have a motion to rescind the earlier motion that we made last year for the collections. Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? And that would be a two thirds. Four to zero with one not voting, or absent. Motion carries. So then, we would need a second motion to send H. Borough to tax foreclosure, taxing, tax levy?
Assessment.
Special assessment.
So what is it gonna be called?
It should be a spe- it's an assessment, actually.
Special, hmm.
Special might be the wrong word, but it's assessed against the tax law stream.
And then to send the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight properties to collections. Because I don't think we had a motion on those originally.
I'll make the motion.
The motion to send H. Borough to tax collection, and then the eight properties at the bottom of your disconnect and late list to collections. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Paul, moved by Dave. Is there any other discussion? Seeing now, proceed to vote. Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. So then the last item would be for the disconnects. Have a motion for.
I'll make a motion for the disconnects.
Dave makes motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Paul. Any discussion?
Just a question?
Yes.
With those that are on the disconnect, but they have partially paid, is that including those too, or is that exclusion too?
I believe we usually exclude those, correct?
Oh, the disconnect?
Yeah.
Depends on how much they've paid. I think the top one probably.
Okay. Yeah, I see some of them, the majority.
Yeah.
Do you have a rule of some that you generally go with?
Usually half unless they've got a little bad. Depends on the.
Okay. Is there a, that moved and seconded, any other discussion? Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Next item in business is commissioners' reports. Paul, we'll start with you tonight.
Okay, we had a, and Levi maybe add to this too, but we had a beautification meeting last Monday. A lot of the talk was about the, uh, anchor, about railroad park. Nothing was decided, nothing was really, came out in concrete. We just discussed the concerns on those, uh, as far as, you know, where we're at, I don't know, maybe JR can, on the fence side, I think, I don't know where, where that came back on a final date when we needed to do that for the lease, did you know? And maybe I just missed that.
It would be after the signing of the lease. I'd have to look at it again to see. I think it was a hundred and eighty days after signing.
Okay. So, we're still looking for input from the public on how they feel about railroad park, and of course, the anchor. We're always looking for more on that, and like I said, I'm sure Levi will address that. Uh, HEDC, they'll have their meeting on Monday, so we'll have anything new. If you have any concerns or questions about how HEDC, you know, they, they get half a cent sales tax, so if you have concerns about what they're doing that, uh, those meetings are usually five thirty on Monday, it'll be on Monday, March twenty seventh. I'm not sure of the location. Right now, it's kind of been moving around a little bit. Then, HEDC, along with, uh, the brewery, did their, did start Bingo. So they have started Bingo, they did their first one on Sunday. I noticed there was a few people there. I haven't heard any numbers back on how that went, but if you're interested in the Bingo, that is still planning on going on Thursday nights and Sunday afternoons. And that is affiliated with the HEDC. On electrical, I have gave a copy to all you commissioners about a proposed disservices agreement with Barnesville to assist with on-service calls. Uh, and I'll, I'll wait till Jim comes back to address any questions on that. Uh, it's with MR Missouri River, who's tied in with Barnesville, of course. So, and Jim, of course, is down in Sioux Falls now, meeting with MRES on, on electrical proposals, and the future proposals as far as different things, as far as energy supplies and, you know, generators. They're doing, they're proposing some different things for communities to add generators for more electrical support and things like that, so hopefully he'll come back with a lot of good news. You know, future ideas that Missouri River has to help their, uh, their pe- the people that are under them, so, the sixty-one members. So, other than that, I believe that's all I have. Thank you, Paul. Dave, do you have anything tonight?
Uh, the first thing I have is the sheriff's department received Ray Weber's new sheriff's pickup, and I'm working with Steve and Jamie, and I just wanna make sure you guys are all still okay with donating that to the fire department, as we spoke about some time ago here.
I agree.
You, did you say you got it? No. Ray got it, isn't he?
Ray got it, didn't he? Did you say Dodge?
Is it actually?
No, no, I wonder if he got it. If it was a Dodge, I'd probably say that too, but.
Is it here in Austin or just here?
It's sitting behind the courthouse. It's been striped, but they've gotta send it to Minnesota to get the equipment put in, and, and, uh, I think the fire department's gonna put some equipment in at the same time, and they will be paying for that themselves, so.
Reason I asked, because it was just in the shop today.
Just so everybody's in agreement, that's all they wanna know, so.
Is everybody in agreement?
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, the other thing I had in this, is we've been down the road with this subject. I've been driving around town a few days, and I noticed a lot of garbage totes sitting out in the street. And it looks like the plow has went around a few of them, and, uh, I guess just do the best you can. If you can pull them up off the street and get them in back in the yard, they don't, there's no reason that they need to be sitting on the street. They just, it just, it just makes the town just look terrible. I know there's a lot of snow, but just do your best and try and get the dumpsters off the street, and I think we'd really appreciate it. And that's all I have.
Okay. Nicole, do you have anything?
Um, the one thing I have is for us to decide on the true up, because we now have the meeting on March thirtieth, um, and that was with the joint powers agreement, um, with the East Central River West, um, Water District. Uh, just going back through my notes again, is, um, there, there doesn't seem like there's an issue with us, um, replacing our agreement with just Hillsborough and ECRWD, which would take Mayville out of that component. Mayville doesn't have anything to do with our true up anyway. Um, so other than that, from a financial standpoint, there's no significant drawbacks, um, to breaking that current GPA unless, are you familiar with that one at all? Okay. So, um, I, basically, um, what I would like us to do is, uh, we have to give them an answer on what we wanna do, and I think that we can, um, definitely do an agreement between Hillsborough and ECRWD, assuming the, the terms remain the same. Um, and that would be, you know, not to break the current until the new one is in place. So, um, I would make the motion for that.
We have a motion to break the joint powers agreement with East Central Water District, and then create a second agreement with just East Central and Hillsborough with same terms as the previous agreement. Is there a second on that?
I'll second that, I agree with her.
Moved by Nicole, seconded by Dave. Is there any other discussion on that?
Jim's good with everything?
Yep, Jim also agrees.
Okay.
Okay, and, uh.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries.
And that's, that's all I have this time.
Um. Couple things that we'll cover. So after our beautification meeting, I did have some things that came up, which was more enlightening as to what's going on with anchor. So I spoke with Everett a while back, last week, um, and I wanted to give you guys an update on that. I asked him about, uh, if they could put some socks or move the augers down, and he said that they were working on that. And then the second thing was, is that keeping the, one of the doors closed in, when they're dumping, in the, this was relating to the south plant. Um, and he said they would work on that. Uh, he said right now, one of their garage doors is not working, and hopefully it's supposed to be fixed tomorrow, if able to. Uh, they've been waiting quite a while for overhead door, one of the companies to come up. He also said that they were looking at buying and something that would go around the pit, so that everything would funnel in instead of coming out, so. Uh, and he did say they were gonna put some more improvements over here on the aug- on the auger systems. Um, I don't remember the exact number, but it's somewhere between two fifty, three hundred thousand that they're sticking in for upgrades to try to get all of this taken care of, so. They are working towards it. Please be patient, and, uh, hopefully things will get fixed. A lot of it is just, uh, as we all know, trying to get stuff to come in, doesn't come in like we're, it used to be. Um, just like that, our mics are in, the rest of the stuff is not, so. Our new mics are in, but not the rest.
Surprise, surprise, huh?
Yep. And when the company was, they asked, uh, when they'll be delivered, and they didn't know, so. We have three of these, and then there will be. You can hook offset mics onto them so that they can go around, and, so they've been ordered.
What's your plans with out there for speakers?
This would be one of these.
I mean for, for them to hear, not to speak, but to.
I believe. Just for volume. I believe once we get that done, that we will see it clear up quite a bit, because what we're hearing is feedback from, it's coming out, hitting the mics, coming back in, so. These are supposed to have the technology in them that takes that, that out, so, that should fix the majority of our issues. And the last thing, I just wanted to make it clear that as long as I am president of the commission, I will always allow the public to speak in front of us. Uh, whether it is right or wrong, whether it's, um, Attorney General's decision, but I feel it's best in our interest for us to hear the public and know what is going on, and know what the feelings are, because I am one person, but I don't wanna make a sole decision. I truly believe that I need the input of the residents of the city of Hillsborough to make good decisions. With that, we'll keep moving on. Jim is gone. JR, do you have anything?
Nothing for me.
Julie, do you have anything from the auditorium?
There's one thing, uh, Kevin from PMA, uh, reported that they have all our documents put together, and they're signed, and they're off to the next step for approval.
Okay. Hopefully we don't have to use that this year.
Right.
Um, I did forget one thing, very important thing. The pool grant was put in, we haven't heard back on that, um, but I would request that we decide what we're going to do for a pool superintendent or pool manager. Kathy has threatened many times to quit, retire. I never believed her the first ten times, so I guess the eleventh time is probably true. So with your blessing, I'll go ahead and try to figure out what we can do for there, if that, okay with everybody?
Go visit with Kathy and kinda get a job description or?
If I can narrow it down, she seems to be going on vacation. Yes, uh, job descriptions and what kinda needs to be done, so. Okay, uh, nothing from the sheriff's office. Steve, you're up next.
Welcome.
Do you wanna turn your mic on, Steve?
Sorry.
That's right.
Got a couple things on the agenda. One of them that wasn't up there is, uh, an update on the, um, I twenty-nine pedestrian bridge. Um, we're working on the sidewalks that interconnect with the bridge, and they've moved the, uh, bid date. It was gonna be spring of, uh, twenty-four, and they moved it to November of twenty-three. So, once we get the sidewalk, we'll continue to work on the sidewalk to de- design to meet the, uh, November twenty-twenty-three bid date. So it'll be bid and then, uh, for construction twenty-four, which falls along with the same plan that the, uh, pedestrian bridge is going, so. It's pretty exciting that next year they might start construction on that pedestrian bridge across I twenty-nine.
Right. Do you know what they're doin- I, we haven't heard what they're doing with the underpa- or the tunnel underneath, what they ended up deciding?
Uh, they were gonna replace that, I thought.
Well, there was three proposals that they were, and we said to replace it, but we never heard what the final decision was, so.
Uh, I'll, I'll check on it.
I was just curious, so.
I thought the plan was to, I know you guys had requested to replace it, and then they, they took that information, but I don't know if they accepted it or not.
Right.
Um, the water sewer project, we've, uh, made a, a crossing on I twenty-nine, and that, that, uh, pipe has been paid, um, invoiced by the contractor and paid the, uh, the ri- no, wait, that one hasn't. The river crossing from the, from the railroad tracks to cross into the park, that one was installed last fall and paid. And the, uh, I twenty-nine crossing has been completely installed. And then a large section of pipe, up by the wastewater plants, was put in the last couple weeks. Now they're kinda holding off, wait for better weather, so they can, um, do some compaction in the pipe trenches, because right now they're just putting the pipe in and leaving it, uh, open. So, in the next couple weeks, I think, uh, guaranteed the snow's gonna be gone, and they're gonna be able to start working. Um, there's a pay estimate in, uh, your packet, two documents. One document is, uh, the pay application, which is two hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy cents. And that would, uh, get the contractor up to date with, uh, what they've installed. We're still doing retainage on some of that, so then we're not paying a hundred percent of the, the pipe installation until the, everything's compacted and tested. But there's two documents. One is the estimate, and then the other one is, uh, application to USDA to accept or allow you to pay the funds. If you approve both of these tonight, then they go on to the USDA for approval, and then it'll come back to you at next, uh, commission meeting to approve the check.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve those payouts?
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Dave, do I have a second? All second. Seconded by Paul. Any other discussion? Nicole? Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries.
So this two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars will come out of the city's loan portion. We still haven't got to the point where the loan is filled, and then USDA's kick, USDA will kick in. The next item on the agenda is the city stormwater, uh, master plan. Came in, uh, last, uh, April, or in August, and we started talking about the, uh, the stormwater master plan, and at the time, um, you're going through the, um, getting all your, uh.
Budgets?
Stuff of uh your, your, your budget in for twenty-two-three and uh so we held off on it and uh just bringing it back up again and see if you guys remember what that was about or if you want me to go into some detail on it.
I think we're just looking at uh what we needed as far as improvements, wasn't it just?
What we're gonna do for the, the master, what the master plan would do is go out and um analyze the entire existing um storm system and the drainage patterns through town and come up with uh where the shortcomings are, if there's additional pipe needed or bigger manholes or uh um additional runs. And then if we got this approved, what we do is once um we come up with a, a, a plan for fixing some of these stormwater problems, then we can uh hopefully have that ready by August, get that into the um the, the budget for next year. And then if that gets, however you guys decide to do that, if you wanna do it as a standalone storm project or if you wanna combine it with a paving project at the time or, or once we get the numbers and what, what the needs are, then we can uh relook at it and see where, where we go from there.
I was just trying to pull it up for everybody but uh yep, Julie off downstairs, look at it, all their folders are.
Yep, we had yep, the um we'd load all the data up into a model, create a mo- existing model and then uh evaluate it and come up with some goals and alternatives and some scoping prices on what it would take to get you to a certain level. And even, you know, most cities don't try to solve a hundred percent of the stormwater problems. You gotta figure out what kind of uh retainage you're gonna have in the streets and if you're gonna accept uh six inches in the gutters that will only last for like an hour. You know, if you're gonna put it down where you have no surface water at any time, then your pipes get really big. But we'll have to come up with a happy medium on uh pipe sizing and surface, your air surface flooding at the time. And that's what this model would come up with.
So, so what are you, you're saying one, two, three or just one and two or?
Yep. Yep, we could have like uh, you know, multiple levels if we, you know, spent this much money, put this much infrastructure in, this is what it would look like around town with uh the flooding and and then uh if we added additional, would it, what that would be and and then at that point, you just have to find kind of a, a nice spot where um, you know, the majority of the flooding is gone. You're not gonna have anything standing around for hours, you know. And uh hopefully keep it all inside the curb. But then when you start looking at the size of the pipes and stuff, then you have to evaluate. It's like, well, you know, can we upsize this pipe, this pipe for this amount and or can we accept a little bit? But we'll, without the model, we, we kinda, we need it all, we need it all figured out so we can come up with a plan and what we should fix.
And that should help when we do our, figure out what's going on with Loyal Avenue. Um, if we, you know, if there's a new school that comes in, how does that can affect our drainage? If we have other things that start coming in, cause right now we're just picking and choosing, trying to make an educated guess of what's gonna happen. This will give us a lot better determination, kinda like what we have with our water system. And it's the same thing that we're working on with our electrical system. So we know this will give us on our storm sewer side.
And we'll come up with a shopping list. So it'll say, you know, if you only wanna do so much uh construction a year, then you can pick and choose where you go with which routes and you don't have, wouldn't have to take it all on at one time, but sometimes if you're gonna special assess it, then you might as well put it all in, cause then you're special assessing citywide. If you do one area, special, special assess that one area and.
Well, I don't think there's any sense in doing any new blacktop until we get this drainage system figured out.
You know, and this is, that's what it is. And it gives us better budgeting, figuring out what we're gonna do on the budgets for, okay, we need to put X amount of dollars into our gutters or valley gutters this year and then next year we're gonna put this much money, cause we can go down the list and start budgeting out what we need to do or if we need to special assess if it's that large of a project. I think it just gives us a better place for us to determine what we need to do.
Any grant money out there to help pay for some of this?
Um, we haven't been able to find any grant money for stormwater.
But I did put it in the budget, of the new budget to go in there out of the, what was it? One of our reserves.
It's towards the bottom of it.
Yep. What are the two reserves? I'm sorry, there's uh the equipment fund and then the other one. Nope.
Work. That's a different budget.
I can't think of the name here.
Capital Projects.
I can't see that.
Under Capital Projects.
Can, I know, I know I've said this before, but this prairie dog money that we get does that, I mean, it's there for infrastructure. Is, can we use that if we have to to a point or?
The first prairie dog money is not there. That was used, that hundred and sixty-five was used for a hundred and twenty. The hundred and twenty-five went towards the USDA. Well, that's our, that was our buy down to bring the project down, so that's used. Have we, I don't know that we've seen the other amount yet, did we?
I don't think we have.
Yeah, there's more than.
I was thinking, were we supposed to get like four hundred thousand or something like that or?
Yeah, I think there's, we're supposed to be, I thought somewhere around four.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So we might not have. What happened is, is that everything got put into the art, into the prairie dog fund, but it's not all prairie dog money that went in there. So that was one of those things we're sorting out. So I don't believe that that, the last, the actual prairie dog funds have come in yet. But yes, we could use some of that, I suppose, too. But like I said, I did plan it in the equipment fund. There was a specific line item on there just for this.
Okay. For the whole amount or just certain task, tasks?
So. I can't remember.
Maybe doing the first few tasks first.
I think we, there was maybe just the first few tasks, but I can tell you there's enough in that fund that we could cover it. If you choose to do the whole amount.
And what's the timeframe on that start to finish?
Um, we would, the goal was to have all this, if we did all the tasks, get them done in time to come up with a budget plan for twenty-four. As we get it in time before um the budgeting in the fall. There's gonna be some go, go, you know, going back and forth on um which options are the best and that kinda stuff. So we're hoping to work on it through August.
As long as we get the big numbers and then.
Yeah.
I think it'll be, are any critical things that we need to do right away?
We'll get the base map set up and then once all the snow is gone and thawed out, then we're gonna get out and wet the survey a little bit. And then add that to the model and then it's a matter of getting the model all set up and working and running different scenarios and stuff.
Any other discussion? Do I have a motion to approve task order? Eleven?
Well, I think it's pretty important. I did get to see the water and sewer, so um I feel like if we were to hang on any longer, other things could become a problem, which is gonna cost more money than to see what we can fix, to make it better now. So I will, I'll make a motion to approve the task.
Nicole makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dave. Is there any other discussion? Dave?
Yes.
Paul? Yes. Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
And I'll be uh on the next two commission meetings, but I'll still listen to the reruns.
I'm guessing it's somewhere warm.
Um, warmer. One, one of them is going.
I thought maybe you were going golf in somewhere, so. All right. Uh, there's nothing new on the beautification tickets and, you know, we already covered the East Central Water True Up. So the next line item is the compost pile by City Shop.
I would like to not discuss that tonight until I talk to Jim and the guys at the shop. There was a citizen that um had talked to me about it and, but until I talk to Jim and the guys at the shop, I would wait till the next meeting. But if the person is listening, we will be working on it, so.
I, just so, cause I know somebody would have asked on that and this is just for informational purposes. As soon as I find it. Reached out to Dakota Fans just to give us a quote of what it would cost to do, kinda what they were looking at. And so this would be the first one. This would be to install a fence on the backside, retake out that fence on the front side and put a new one on. And then put a fifteen foot automatic gate width coated opener in it. And you're looking at fifty-one five hundred, no, sorry. Thirty-one thousand, five fifty-three. The other one was if we were to move it somewhere else. And approximate the same size.
That first one was, the first one you showed was with the gate operator or?
Correct, but that, remember that is only two sides. And this one is a full one fifty by one fifty. And then to put an automatic gate opener on it, it is another, so it's thirty-one thousand, two twenty-six for the fence and then another eight thousand, one forty-five for that automatic gate opener controller. I'll forward that on to you. I was just.
Thank you.
I just thought that would be critical information for us to know, talking about it if we did.
Yeah, very good information.
Next item is the cemetery farmland lease agreement renewal.
So it looks like it's a four year?
I believe so. I had asked Ashley, who was gonna talk about this tonight, but I never got a response back. So hopefully JR is, but.
All I know is that uh she did ask me about it and I said we could re-sign it for it is. I'm not sure, does Mike have the ca- cemetery portfolio? Cause he was gonna reach out to the prior tenant to see.
Somebody does.
Yeah, see, that's what I thought. He was gonna reach out to the prior tenant to see if they wanted to renew was the main thing. And if they do, then if it's okay, I don't know if they wanna do another four-year term if the commission wants to approve. I assume it's just gonna be the same terms in another four years. Or five years, excuse me.
So we can hold off on it until Mike probably talks on it.
Could, yep.
That would probably be the best. We'll go ahead and table this till the next meeting? All right. The next item is the future of rural supply chain crowdsourcing. That came from um North Dakota State University. They have the um it's a long name, so I gotta make sure I get this right. The Upper Great Plains Transportation Institute and they're applying for a National Science Foundation grant to provide a last mile delivery, which essentially would be they would, what they're proposing or to create an app is to, creating an app that would allow citizens in Hillsborough or Fargo or Grand Forks to be able to pick up packages and then deliver them that last so distance, um just making your normal day runs. Um, trying to help with some of those issues with throughout COVID. They did ask if it would cost anything and he said uh the only thing that we would see is if the grant did go through, we'd need city or somebody here that would help with facilitating and actually getting the information out to the public. So it'd only be if it was gonna be implemented, not anything up to it. Nothing on the design, so. Um, this is the same group that we worked with a few years ago that went well. And so before I sign anything, I wanna make sure, get your guys' blessing that it would be okay.
So, from what I understand, they want to do this again or be passed to some people?
We haven't done this before. This is a new app that they would design and build specifically for this region to. So if Dave needed a package, but he couldn't make it and Paul was, works in Fargo every day, Paul could look at his app and say, I got this package, this this package I could pick up. He could say, yep, this will fit in my schedule. I'll pick it up and drop it off. And it may or may not be at the house. It may have to be Senex or Casey's or somewhere else and then they would have to come pick it up. The, the lot, you know, the person that's gonna get it, Dave would pick it up.
And then you said something about a grant, so they, they would.
So they're, they're applying through the, from National Science Foundation grant, which would build the app and all associated fees with that. Like I said, the only fees, or the only thing that we would see possibly would be the. Like I said, the only fees, or the only thing that we would see possibly would be the advertising and so on after. And hopefully Paul would talk to H E B C and see if this is something that would help them also. But that didn't have to be decided now as far as.
So they're just looking for our blessing right now?
Our blessing, um um basically for us, it's our intent to collaborate, commit resources um as the team in the project description. For facilities, equipment, or other resources, in which he said it would be helping them get the word out in our community about it.
Have they tested this yet or?
No, that would all be.
That's under all that grant?
That's, that's all through the grant. It's building, testing, everything would be in the grant before it would be sent out. If they got it.
You have this on your, you put that on the screen enough.
The letter or the grant?
Well, it's, on the end of it, it has access and inclusion, kind of focus of the proposed project. Now maybe that might be.
Explain more exact, explain more exactly what it's about?
This one?
Yep. The bottom part of it, looks like it's kind of.
Yeah, like starting at the however.
Cause it talks about the focus of the proposed project, as in examining how our crowdsourcing platform, so.
So go up uh, go up uh, up two more pages. Yep, talks about the integrating the efficiency.
I think this would be a good name for residents and somebody's transporting, I mean we have American Crystal that has employees traveling all the time, so it gives them that extra income to help pay for travel or anything like that.
Say I'm definitely curious. Mine kinda goes into USPS and FedEx and the regular DHL and you know where the package comes from, where it goes to.
I know there was one that was possibly covered before, but I don't know that it didn't have the, the backing or the funding behind it to make it really work, so. And I don't know if there was an app developed. So if you're okay with it, I just need a blessing to sign a letter of collaboration with the Great Plains Transportation Institute.
No, it's just a blessing, no.
There's no commitment at, no, there's no P I S stuff, it's a, uh it's not exactly what it's about.
They're kinda just looking, they want our help, we need support with something that might, they have an idea of it, will this work and is this feasible or whatever it might be.
Yep, he said, uh thanks for responsibility, but would not cost the city any major expenses when I thought of Hillsborough, I thought the service enabled by a mobile app can be, can enable commuters traveling from Fargo or Grand Forks to Hillsborough regularly can sign up to receive pay, like Uber drivers and get paid to bring in a batch of parcels into the city. And similarly, if the city transport agency is willing to participate, gauge the transport transit agency to transport parcels based on what would work best for the agency and potential parcel shipment agencies. App would be developing grant, with grant money, the money is in exchange for hauling parcels. Will be coming from the shipping agencies, therefore do not see any major expenses. We will however need to coordinate with the city officials or community partners to advertise this service to help with the recruiting of interested personnel and train any city officials if needed on the research tasks involved at the city. We still need to hash out the specifics on the operation based on the community and shipping providers included. But at this stage, we have a framework that we are willing to tweak based on our case studies. Hope this information is helpful.
I guess, I guess I would support it, but if there's any, when the time comes when there's costs that might be involved, I think we need to be made aware of it and decide at that point, but we'll certainly support them up till that point.
Okay.
I agree.
Got the words right out of my mouth.
That emotion too?
That's a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Nicole. Is there any other discussion? Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. I'll get that sent off for him. Next item of business is the line worker student opportunity. So that came across my, my desk at school, not here. Um and I think it's a good opportunity that we should really look at, and Paul and I talked a little bit about it. Basically what it is, is there is a summer course available for a student or students to attend and get credit at Bismarck State College and then get credits through the, through the schools, through Hillsborough School to get classes to be an electrical lineman or work towards that, understand what it is, get some of that experience. When I asked him about what he thought it would cost, he said it would somewhere be around twelve hundred dollars. My idea to Paul was if we could offer one or two, or whatever you, you think scholarships for students in our community, uh maybe first granted for those that live in Hillsborough and a user, and then maybe one that's outside of the area that we would pay for. Apply and then they would get the funding to help them pay for this and go down and take the classes, which the whole being that we could grow our own workers eventually someday.
So this would take the whole class? Sorry.
That's right.
This would be a whole class that would get to go?
Nope, it's a one, just one person.
Just one person?
But it's over, it's, it's over the whole week, right?
Correct.
It's not just one day, it's, it's.
It's a week and they'll get uh one credit, a class for it.
So how do you choose a person? I'm kinda new to this, so.
Well, I think what we'd have to do is Paul and I and Jim would have to sit down and come up with an application and uh have them students fill it out and then whichever one we choose based on that by criteria that we had set in the application.
It's, to me, it's leaning more towards somebody that would be, that has a lot of interest in being the lineman, being a lineman. And maybe they just want one little bit of hands-on to see if they wanna make that step. Encouraging them to hopefully come back to Hillsborough if they do go on and, and become a lineman, if they come back to Hillsborough and, and work in this area. Provide services maybe potentially to Hillsborough in the future. So like Levi said, it's more about maybe growing your own. If we can get somebody that maybe calls Hillsborough home, we might have a chance of getting them to come back here and, and live here. You know, we've talked about through the months and it's time and years about, you know, do we, do we wanna get a lineman in Hillsborough? Uh to help support our maintenance and so on, and in case there's emergencies or whatever it is. And maybe this is just the first step to maybe finding that person going down the road. I think we have to be more proactive. I know that Missouri River, along with everybody, I'm sure NODAC and everybody, they're struggling to find linemen, and maybe if we can be more proactive, that if nothing else, maybe we can get them to work for those local utilities and uh to stay in the area, so, cause right now, we, me and Jim, that's what we struggle with right now is, is getting that local support that we need, you know, we're getting support from several entities right now. And the more we can hopefully narrow that down in the future to one entity that's kind of the primary, the primary, you know, maintenance. You know, and if that person happens to be working for the city, more power to us. Then we can get done what we wanna get done, when we wanna get it done. We're not at the mercy of other people because most people, most of them are gonna contract, you know, from more than one city. And uh you know, if you need something done right away, well, if they've got something going on in another city, you know, depending on the importance of it, you may or may not get them to come right away, so. I just look at it as a fact of something, you know, if we have somebody that's really truly interested, we may or may not even have anybody interested in it. But if we do, that this is something that can push them over to do it and uh hopefully bring them back to the area, I think it's worth it.
It looks like a really good agenda. And field trades, so. You said it's, it's twelve hundred dollars for the one?
Yep, he's, they're anticipating about a twelve hundred dollar cost, so.
And that would be something the city would, would pick up or?
That's our hope, our, my hope is that he would.
There, there has, there has been, you know, mess talking to Marcy with M R S. If something like that, if they would be interested, we haven't really pushed it because you don't really know what to do here, but maybe they might be, be willing to come on board with it. I, I can't say yes or no, but we're gonna sure ask them uh if they would, any little bit that they could help. Because like I said, we would encourage them to not only, if we don't do anything in Hillsborough, we'd encourage them to come back and work for Missouri River
Right.
or whoever it might be, because uh they're always looking for linemen, so.
And I did have, I don't know if Paul had talked to her, but I had forwarded on to Marcy.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
And she emailed back and asked if she could share it out to everybody, and I said sure.
But I'm sure it's new to them, so they would have to see what they would do with it, so.
And it was just a matter of how many we would like to sponsor, if we'd like to do that. I think twelve hundred would be the cost for them down there, that doesn't include travel, so I don't know if you wanna help cover that too, or you know, it's all up to you guys. But food and everything is covered in that for them, so it's basically just getting down there.
Well, I think we could sign, I'd like to see us, so we start with one, and if we have more than one that has interest, you know, that you know, maybe we can review, come back and, and see if we wanna do two, but just kinda see what, how interested the students are. Do we have anybody that may be interested or may not, you know, if we have two people that are really interested? You know, I don't see why we couldn't do a couple if they, if they show, if they show strong interest in it, of course.
And with that, do you wanna keep it in Hillsborough or do you wanna get it out to our other coal schools, Central Valley?
I would keep it, I would keep it right in Hillsborough for now. Unless, you know, unless you can't find anybody.
I could, I could see Central Valley because they're kinda connected with us here, so I could see Central Valley, you know, cause that's, you know, but uh but the main emphasis obviously is to try and encourage them to, to, to stay in this area and work in the area that supplies electricity to Hillsborough, so.
Do we have any other discussion? Any input from the members of the community? Yes?
And they do that at the, you know, Wapitin, but for this, it'd be a little harder to do that.
There is an option that we could do, uh we did have a, a plan for a employee, a third. I put in for a third summer employee this year. But possibly maybe that could be that position along with this.
So someone for their apprenticeship?
Uh it wouldn't be an apprenticeship, it'd just be coming along, seeing what some of the work is like. Cause there's, there's no way, yes?
I hate, just, hold on, we, we really have to have you guys come up to the mic, I'm sorry. Cause we'll get it on Tuesday, because we couldn't hear anybody in the crowd. Thank you. That turned on?
If the students in I E P are untitled, why not work with the whole rehab? Have them cover a portion of the cost of it. If they're in I E P or entitled, that's, it's there, it's a state, the funding is there. Thank you. Any other?
Do I have a motion for one, sponsoring one and have Paul and Jim and myself come up with the application and for submission?
I'll make that motion.
Paul makes the motion, is there a second?
I have a second though.
Seconded by Nicole, is there any other final discussion? Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. So anybody out there that's listening tonight?
I, I E P and what? I E P and what was the other thing?
Five oh four.
Five.
Anybody listening tonight that has anybody that's interested, send them Paul's way. Last item on new business is the policy manual, and I assume that's just for us to start looking at. Looking at it and seeing if there's any changes that need to be made, added, uh especially on developing that hiring process, what we wanted to do, and I think, you know, trying to get all the job descriptions in the policy manual. And with that, uh I think when I met with Ashley and Julie and Sarah on Friday, I think we had a very good conversation of what um what I was looking for in that position especially. Wasn't necessarily anything new, I think there was a lot of things that got lost and a few transitions. Some reports, some different things, and just to make sure that those are caught back up in one of the positions or another, and just switching some things around, so they were gonna work on it this week or next week to get that done. Is that soundable right, Julie? They were gone, two of them are gone completely. So hopefully we'll have that drafted out for you on that position.
Yeah, I too met with all three of them and had a great conversation, I think we answered a lot of questions and what we, what, what I was looking at and what they were looking at, and I think we're well on our way to getting that all, so that everybody knows who's doing what and if there's gonna be any changes.
Right, you know, and some of it, I love Steve and A H U S, but you guys cost a lot of money for some things, so. If we can keep some of that in-house and that, some of it, you know, when we had the true-ups, a lot of the numbers are there. It's just pulling those numbers and putting them together, so making sure that we're keeping track of those or energy or a lot of different things, so.
I just think that stuff, Steve, I don't say it out loud.
I know, you will. Alright, do we have any citizens that would like to address the commission?
Yes.
Back when the city got gas service, one of the promises made by the gas company was that they would repair anything that they destroyed, putting the lines in, such as sidewalks, such as yards. I've approached the gas company at the direction of the city's office four separate times over the last year and a half and gotten zero response.
What is the address?
Two oh three First Avenue Southwest, and if you walk around this town, any block where they ran it, you're going to see damage. They did not fix. I'd like for the city to approach the gas company, to ask them when they're going to fix what they destroyed. They cut out part of the sidewalk for me, they took out a chunk of yard and backfilled it with gravel. I don't mean P rock, I mean gravel. They never came back to fix it. If I go to the corner on the block I'm in, I see the same. If I go to the corner on the block I'm in, I see the same thing. If I go across the street, I see the same thing for the neighbors there. If I go on the other side of town, I see the same thing. The gas company has not fulfilled what they told the residents of this town they were going to do. They're not answering the residents when we call.
So I can tell you this, that I had an issue with one of them. Somebody in this public came to me and I reached out by email to Mr. Palmer, which was the person that originally came to us. It closed the gas. Within an hour, I had a phone call from one of the second ones and I believe it was fixed cause I haven't heard back, so it was taken care of. So I will make the email and I will make the phone call.
Thank you.
If needed and it, at least at this address, it, for sure. And if anybody else has any things, just email info@hillsboro-nd.us or call the city and let them know and we'll get it on the list and then we'll make sure that it's taken care of.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address?
Speaking of sidewalks, I kinda had the same issue. I had noticed around town, it's not so much from the gas work, but just, I think it's the age of some of these sidewalks are getting into pretty poor condition. And obviously it's up to the residents to try to keep them maintained, but at the same time, I think there's a pretty wide system issue with all the sidewalks. You know, we got ones that aren't handicapped accessible. Um, the other side of it is four or five months of the year, we can't even use them. If we're filing snow on it, so. I kinda look at it, what's the point of having a sidewalk if you can't use it? You know, for, uh, at least ten months of the year or even more. And, you know, it, I think, uh, used to be for kids walking to school, but most parents now drop them off. I know Sarah drops off my kids. And I think a lot of that's because they don't, they don't feel safe having them walk to school because I've, I've walked on several of these sidewalks and there's chunks missing or sections of sidewalk missing in areas. You could easily sprain your ankle or break an ankle. And, you know, I'm a fairly young guy still, but some of the older folks in town that are walking around, they, I think they would definitely get seriously hurt. Um, so I mean, I think we need to tie that into if we redo our streets and our curbs. That's, could be the next step too, is get some of these sidewalks redone. Um, and also wanna address the, I know y'all know about my email I sent to you and I sent the two banners as well and they published it and I know Levi addressed it. My whole point to that email wasn't to squash opinions. It was how they were stated and when they were stated. That, to me, you know, you guys were elected and I want you guys to have the discussion. But, um, when it starts getting into intimidating people that are on the city offices, that's where I would like to draw the line. Tonight, that's fine. If that's how you wanna run it, that's how you wanna run it. Maybe I don't agree with it, but I'm not under commission, so I don't have anything to say about it. But that's my opinion. Um, other than that, I guess, uh, I, I feel that you guys have accessibility through your email. There's concerns that come up in the meeting that you can always be emailed. Um, you can always talk to you after the meeting. I believe mostly you are here for a few minutes after the meeting. There's other ways to address it. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Who was the name of the individual before, just so we, we forgot? The last speaker was John Meyer, but who was the one before? Jared Ferguson? Is there anybody else that would like to speak? I forgot to ask you guys to state your name just ahead of it.
Bonnie, ma'am. First of all, I do wanna say thank you though for, um, what Mr. Myers said here and, and I understand, but it is nice to know, uh, the commissioners who are able to come. It's a public forum, it is our city and you help run it and do business. But the people of this town, it is our city and I appreciate being able to come and talk to you about concerns, whatever it may be, or say my piece as part of this country. And whether we agree or not, okay, so be it. But I have a right to come like anybody else and a lot of people probably don't come because they, they're concerned, but they don't go out or they're busy or they're older and it's winter. But I mean, I appreciate being able to come and that right better not be taken from us. Whether it's city, state, or whatever. Um, my sister's a little afraid to get up here, Tanya Nelson, but what we're wondering is she got a bill for five hundred dollars in water. That was just the water. Uh, she's had nothing but a problem at this house she built. And, uh, she had a flood. The, the builder didn't put a heater on the furnace and it flooded all over, but then this was later. Is there any way, and you don't look at the meter, um, you know, you don't keep track every day about meters of electricity or what? But when she got this, the total bill was eight seventy-five, but we don't know where the water went to. There must've been a leak. And somebody did mention to us that maybe the water thing at the curb, if we could get to that, which is so much snow, maybe that line or something, something's leaking. She has a small drip in the one, in, in mechanical room. And she paid the bill and is there any way? There's no way that you check the bill, so I mean, something like this would be happening. You wouldn't know till the end of the month when you send out the bill. But is there a way we could call in and check? Are you able to look?
Something had to been running.
But it's empty. She doesn't live there. She does-
Why don't you shut the water off?
You could shut the water off.
Shut the water off on the curb stop?
It is off.
Snow on the curb stop?
Cause you have to remember that it's, if it went through the meter, the water leak had to be after the meter. And there should be, generally the plumbers will always put a, you wouldn't even have to shut off the meter. There is a shut-off valve. Generally wherever your water comes in, you should be able to shut that valve off before the meter and then there wouldn't be anything that leaked past meter, cause then the meter is-
But if you shut it off on the curb stop, you're not gonna have to pay for it.
Right. If you shut off the curb stop, then yes, you wouldn't have to pay anymore.
But she didn't know she got this and of course there's so much snow, you'd really have to dig down.
But it wouldn't be out there, it'd be in the house.
Oh, okay. Okay, because she had a drip and the painter was there and just turned it on and he turned it off, so we don't know, but I mean, so this doesn't happen again. It's not your fault with what's going on. We're gonna have a plumber come and check this. But i- if, shh, are you able to, if we call in and say, how? What is it looking at now when there's no usage of water?
I could look at it.
You can do that, okay.
And I looked on our, like our water, you know, I think you have water leaks and it didn't show up on there.
But that would show up?
I could pull that meter up.
Oh, okay. So, um, we could have you look at it now and see probably.
But if, could they have a toilet running or, you know?
But there's no toilets, there's no plumbing in there, there's no toilets. She had a mess, so there's no shower, no toilets, no sink water, uh, garbage she doesn't even use.
Are there's water lines, is the water lines under the house at all?
Yeah, it's a, uh-
So there could be a break underneath the house that you wouldn't even see. Cause it has to be after the meter, so, and if there's no basement, you're not gonna see that water. So, I mean, Julie said, we can shut, you can have us shut the meter off. I'm sure, we could do that, or you can shut it off before the meter would be the option. I don't know if John is still here, if he's willing to blow snow to get to it. I know, I know you do.
But at least we can call you then and, and check and see if she can think about what to do and talk to you then.
Does your, does all the water go from your meter underneath, you're in your, underneath your house to the other rooms then? Yes and no? Because you definitely wanna figure out, if, if you're using that much water, you wanna find out as soon as you can where that's going. Are you gonna have? Uh, so that was after the meter, okay. And you don't have anybody that goes to the house on a regular basis?
Nothing's in there. If it weren't illegal to shoot the builder, I would, excuse me. I wouldn't kill him, but he'd be shot someplace he wouldn't be. Sorry.
You know this is live.
Yeah, that's fine. He needs to be, uh, anyway, thank you. I just wanted, you know, we aren't gonna contest it, it, it is and-
Do you want the water shut off then at the curb stop? I mean, that would shut it off in the house.
What kinda project is that, John?
Okay.
Right.
But no, it's not gonna be easy to get to then.
John said he likes to blow snow.
Or they all are.
Do you have to dig much? Okay.
We'll give them a bigger shovel.
Do you want to do it?
Now just remember if they shut it off, it's off and you can't do anything.
You guys decide and, and you don't have to decide now, just let the office know what you'd like to do.
Okay, we'll do that.
Is that a hundred or?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Oh, well that's a-
Fifty dollar refund.
Better than-
Right.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you, Bonnie. Is there anybody else that would like to address the commission? Anybody else? Uh, I just remembered this. I just wanted to ask all of you for your blessing, if you're okay with it. Um. Dave. Dave Nelson approached me and asked about the track. On my side to blow the snow off, trying to open it up so we could hopefully get track practice on there soon. Uh, the school's little blower that would work, does it work or it won't work? He just asked if, he said, well, maybe I could see if we could use the cities to do that. Would you guys be okay with us doing that? We refill it up with fuel based on the school paying for it, that type of thing, just the use of it.
Is it gonna work? How much snow is out there?
About fourteen, three forty-two. And it's not, we're not, have to blow it all off, but at least if you get it down, you don't, you're not trying to get all of that snow off. Which would help get the kids off of the streets where they started running today or yesterday, so.
And they want, uh, they wanted to, they want, would we want somebody from the city to do that?
I said I would do it or, um, if you allowed it, Dave would do it, either one of us, but we wouldn't go any further than that, so.
You talking about, which snow blower are you talking about?
The little John Deere.
Oh, okay. I thought you were talking about-
No, not a big one, just a little John.
Yeah, yeah, you would wanna take that on track though.
Hmm, I don't believe so. No. Not that I was aware of, it wasn't published, cause it has published twice. It was. But if you do wanna talk about it, you sure can a little bit. I mean, that's. No, that's, it would be, it has to be published twice in order for us to hear it.
The city, or the ci- school has a tra- the same tractor, don't they, or?
They do, but the, the differential's out and it's not full wheel drive. So they only got one wheel turning, not four, so. You don't need a motion, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that you're okay with that before I leave now, so.
I don't have an issue other long as you run it, or somebody from the shop runs it.
I know John likes to blow the snow, but I don't think he likes blowing it that deal. I know.
John, maybe you should just pull over there with it and just see what Dave says.
They blew the ball diamond off today, I see.
Yep, they did. And the biggest thing is they need to tire type things and that's why, so. You're okay with that? Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Do I have a motion to adjourn then?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Moved by Dave, second at all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.